And then who else do we have on the Zoom? Kimball Rogers, he's with.
And James Call.
And James. We have one more. Wasn't, weren't we having one more on? Oh, Ryan.
Yeah, he's not on there, just James and Kimball.
Okay. All right. Okay, well, welcome, everybody. We'll go ahead with the opening ceremony and Mark Hendrickson will lead us in that.
Our dear kind of heavenly Father, as we begin this meeting today, we're thankful for the opportunity to serve and we pray now for guidance and direction from me that our minds and thoughts can be open and we can comprehend the things we're dealing with and we're thankful for our community and the great people that reside here. Thankful for the blessings that we enjoy and we pray for safety throughout, bless it all, be at home as we're here. We'll return home safely when it's done. We thank you, Father, for everything that thou continues to be still upon us, we say things of Jesus Christ.
It appears that we don't have any citizens here, so unless Kyle wants to take up some general citizen time. So we'll go right to the working agenda, no public hearings. 4B, request to determine whether substantial changes have been made to merit the rehearing of assisted living center. Corey, are you on for that?
Yes, I have a staff report by Bob. I'll go ahead and read that, update you guys. Planning Commission Agenda Report 21121, Consider Request to Rehear the Zone Change Application for Proposed Assisted Living Facility on 5.43 acres located east of Gates Lane between Santa Clara Drive and the Santa Clara River. Kyle Haven is the applicant. To remind you guys, a little background, the applicant or the assisted living facility proposed for the area of Gates Lane is seeking another opportunity to have Planning Commission and City Council rehear the zone change request. You can see an enclosed letter by Kyle Haven. The zoning ordinance section 17.04.210 below states that a significant change must occur in the zone change request if the matter is to be reconsidered within one year of the city council's denial or withdrawal of the request. It is up to the planning commission to determine if this significant change has occurred. The applicant states the two conditions have changed. Their application is now more complete and we have several exhibits that we will show you shortly that Kyle has submitted. And public support for the zone change request has significantly changed. The proposed project remains basically the same. The PC needs to determine what evidence is needed to verify the applicant's claim of a significant change in public support and has adequate evidence been provided to the planning commission to provide follow with scheduling another public hearing before the planning commission and then considered by city council. The project has gone through a hearing process twice before with the second time involving moving the project further to the west toward Gates Lane. If the planning commission decides that there is adequate evidence of a significant change in public support to pursue another public hearing, then another public hearing will be scheduled and the project will be considered for the third time. Note that without a significant change in the zone change request, the applicants wait a period of one year before we filing the request and that would be one year from the date that the city council denied the request and that was November 18, 2020. So we have several submittals here and I will turn the time over to Kyle Haven so that he can walk through those submittals and show the planning commission his proposal of a significant change.
Kyle Haven, applicant. Um, I, I think this would be at least a third time that we've been back in this body or presence and so I think mostly you're familiar with with what we're trying to get approved. It indicated that there was just maybe a couple of major changes. That, I think that first report was written and a month ago, we've since done some additional things and just really trying to make sure that we've heard the residents, heard council members, heard staff and made the necessary changes to, to warrant a significant change. The, the application process, it goes through a list of A through K, I believe it is, and we've now included exhibits to indicate those A through K to make sure that we have a completed application. The previous application was missing the lighting plan. It was also missing the sidewalk walkability or corridors that would, that would help show the identification of traffic flow, pedestrian traffic flow on site. And those were some of the major issues that we faced with the planning and zoning commission of just not having the, the application complete. And after, after the process in, in speaking to some council members and others that, that that was certainly something that hindered them from being able to not cast a more informed vote only, but, but maybe even a favorable vote. That was indication enough for, for me to say that's a substantial change where you can have a project that was perhaps going to be approved, but because it lacked a technicality, a couple of exhibits that, that it was us denied. Well, from that process, we've also gone on to include and do some other things that we've heard from residents and council members and staff. And some of those, the concerns of residents were just a general massing. This is a larger building, perhaps one of the larger buildings aside from the schools and the city office building that would be in Santa Clara Harmon's as well. With the situation in the world that we're in right now and because of that, we have taken this diagram, this conceptual layout, if you look at it, there's three massings of buildings. And we've reallocated that and changed that into six smaller type buildings. And I believe that that exhibit is in this presentation somewhere. The memory care would stay, there it is there. Thank you. This really does make a big difference and it makes a big difference, not just aesthetically, but it makes a big difference in. Thank you. It, it makes a difference in the architectural design and element of these buildings and the way that they're going to feel. We know that we can break buildings up by landscaping, helping them to appear smaller, but nothing is quite as effective as actually separating those mass, the massing and, and we've done so on this. So, so this, this is again illustrates you know, different feel, keeping it, it's still the same use, the assisted living facility, senior living facility, but it will appear more residential-ish. The architectural design elements, there's some included images of, of the renderings that, that those haven't changed. That's a great one. Thank you. So essentially that image illustrated you can kind of see it on the TV.
So that's the image that's going to face from the.
From Benelli, correct. So, so if we, we spent a lot of money developing and planning and drawing and doing some different things. We did not engage somebody else to give us some additional renderings on what those buildings might look like separated. But I think it's not too difficult if you just imagine and, and look at the breakage of where these trees are that, that that would help break up those buildings, but they would actually be separate, not just, not just sheltered by landscape. I, I've got a list of seven items that we feel are part of the process of why we're here today and asking to see you again and city council again. We spoke about the, the buildings, breaking them up into six smaller buildings, which is something that will help the overall feel to, to fit more into the residential area that, that, that it's surrounded by. And we've included elevations that were missing from the previous submittal, the lighting plan, the walkways, sidewalks that which, which we mentioned. Those are the, probably the key points as to why we feel like we should be able to present a full packet to city council and let them make their decision based on a completed packet instead of items that were missing that, that hindered or perhaps changed the way that they would vote. Any questions for me?
So you said you had seven. I mean, you just.
I tried to write them down as she's talked and I got four, so.
Yeah, I was gonna say I only came up with four.
So. So, Dale, do you have that list of items that, there it is.
It's on our.
I can read them. I've got them. Reduce the overall density from the original design. One, instead of the two large buildings, we now have six smaller scaled buildings to feel more residential. This not only makes the project feel safer, but it also helps in being able to adapt to better distancing and safeguarding if needed as we navigate through these pandemics and potentially others. We've included the elevations that were missing. We didn't have the memory care elevation in the previous submittal. We've included the lighting plan that was missing as well. We've included the walkways, sidewalks, pedestrian corridors, understand the traffic flows of the pedestrians. We've had a substantial change in the local support of the project. We've sent out a survey and I've never been in favor of the surveys or petitions, but we, we sent out a survey and had a overwhelming response in support for, we, we didn't give them specifics. We just, it was a, it was a would you like to see or have a senior city, senior site assisted living facility in Santa Clara boundaries? We didn't indicate where it was going to be, the heights, the valley, just to see what the general feel was. As we've indicated, there's been a, there's been a substantial change in even the residents that, that were, are mostly affected, if you will, those who are close to where the facility is proposed. We've had multiple meetings, spoke and multiple phone calls, Zoom meetings, addressed their concerns, changed. And I don't know if, if this body was part of the conversation that we discussed with having an architectural design committee that would be, that would, that would have citizens here if they wanted to participate in that and help through that process is as we know that, that architectural design elements are important, the way that it looks is important. And I don't know if I got to seven or not, but just a fully completed packet and the the items that were missing were unintentional. We, we certainly would have submitted those had we noted them ourselves or been reminded by staff and unfortunately neither of those two things happened, so.
So I just, I don't recall what the commercial piece looked like, Kyle. But is this the same elevation we saw before or is it different? It seems like the first elevation was a lot taller.
It was two stories, I thought, wasn't it?
Well.
Wasn't it three stories on the front?
So.
Three on the back.
Three on the back.
Yeah, the, where it gets really difficult and the, the process that I, the way that we understand this process, the elevations are noted as typical elevations. And if, if you're familiar with the building process and the architectural design and the, and the cost that goes in, we're well over $50,000 into this project and we don't have an approval. It doesn't mean that you have to approve us, but it, it becomes very expensive and it actually states through the, through the city code that, that it discusses that and it knows that it's an expense and so it, it indicates and talks about that, that these are not sketches or renderings that are, that are required in full detail. This first part of the process is, is the preliminary plan and it does become part of the, the plat approval. After this part is approved, it then goes into what's called the phase plans. And in those phase plans is when you get more specific and much more identifying of actual floor plans where at that point you have an approval, you can spend the money to, to go to a full rendering. So that's a long answer for your question, Mark. But, but those renderings were typical elevations that we wanted to demonstrate and show this is the idea. Since then, we've indicated and said, yes, we'll, we'll maintain and keep that down to a one-story building. And so in these new renderings, you'll see that that is, we've tried to make it as close as we can to really give the idea of what we want to do. And it's helped because it's let the residents feel more comfortable in what we really want to do. And there was a lot of misconception. We wanted to show that three-story building only because of the architectural design, because it felt good. It reminded me personally of the Jacob Hamlin home. It, it felt like it would fit there, but it got interpreted as you want to build a three-story. No, we don't.
So just to, just to remind the commission, the thing, the question before us is is sort of subjective. It's consider request for rehearing of zone change based on the fact that this is a substantial change. So significant, right, significant change. So that is, that's a little subjective. We can go ahead and we can jump right to that question if we wanted to. I don't think based on our past actions in this meeting, it's you're probably sitting in a friendly environment, Kyle, I guess, but I haven't heard anything to change my mind. But the, the council's obviously disagreed with, with what we've said and so it causes us a little bit of pause, go, whoa, well, you know, what did, what did we miss and why? So the, let's just review real quick. You're, you're seeking for a zone change. Will you remind us what the? I was just looking for that. The zone change is from what to what? To just clarify that.
So that's from R110, RA to PD commercial or residential?
And then I want clarity on that. That's for only 3.7 of the 5.7 acres, is it not?
No.
Some of it's already commercial.
Well, the, it, I don't, I don't think it is. The, the front about 150 feet off of Santa Clara Drive has an overlay of the historic district which allows for the commercial. So.
That's the mix there.
Yes. Correct.
Send your microphone down there.
On the west. Hey, Mark, do you mind if I make a comment about this or somebody else on the mic?
Yeah, Shelley wants to make a comment.
Okay, go ahead.
I was thinking there was a portion over on this side that was retained as residential, but that's not true, you're saying, over on the.
The east side?
The southeast side. Yeah, right there.
Yes.
This area?
Yep.
Yeah.
Correct. We're, we've, we've removed that from our application. That we're not, it's zone residential. That, that is, our intent is just to leave that residential. But I, I did feel that to mention one more thing, the commercial aspect here in the, in the front. You know, as, as a, as a resident, not as a developer, as a resident. And, and, and having family members who have participated in, in city council staff and talking and just hearing the vision of Santa Clara from different people. You know, at, at some point, and I hope that there is a need for some small neighborhood commercial there. Clearly there's not a need right now and even if this was to get approved, the need might still not be there for a number of years. And so what we would like to do is have the ability to have that become commercial at some point in time in the future, if, if it's warranted. But that would actually just become part of the office administrative staff for the, for the facility. We would build it to be able to be separated for the, the option at a later point in time. But if that became a concern or an issue of staff or, or council, we would, we would be willing just to negate that. We, we do hope and feel that at some point there would be a fun need for that. But there, but some of the residents were opposed to that and, look, we, we really do try to put our best foot forward. We really do try to, to listen. From the original plan that was first discussed, you know, six months ago, this is an entirely different project. The use is the same, but the project is completely different and to our discredit and to the residents and staff and council's credit, you know, this is better, that this feels better. And so part of the process has helped us to get to a better spot, we believe, of something that we're going to be even more proud of.
So Corey, in the, in the zone change, what we approved, we wouldn't approve that tonight, but if we went through the process and it was approved, what is this basic site plan is, is, would be the law, correct?
Correct. What, what submitted as the site plan hits the ground.
They'd have to, they'd have to come back and get a change if it changed from that. They'd have to go through the process.
On that site plan, they would have to come back and amend their site plan. Here at planning commission and on city council.
James, you had a question or a comment?
Yeah, so just, I, I appreciate Kyle's coming to the, the planning commission, kind of the challenges that they've had to work through here. When I, I'd just like to address the thing about the public sentiment on that. I think I was probably the only member of the planning commission that did not vote to approve this project. And the main reason is because I didn't feel like the residents were really supportive of a zone change. And so I feel like just two things on that is that I feel like if you buy a piece of residential property and then you have a wonderful project that you'd like to go in there, the residents aren't obligated to accept that. And so that's, that's kind of just like my foundation tenet on that. The other thing that I was kind of concerned about at the public hearing, it seemed to me that there were people like Nate Munro and, and and other people that, that were affiliated in some way with Split Rock that, that were a lot of the positive feedback that we were getting there. So I appreciate the fact that, that Nate and people like him live in our community. But when I see like all the, this, this, these projects aren't in favor of it and those that are affiliated, you know, are showing support for it, I think that's fair. They, they live in the city of Santa Clara, but yeah, I, I put a little more value on the votes of the folks that are living in that area than, than maybe somebody like me that lives up here by Harmon's. And maybe I, you know, have some interest in, in this. So I, I don't know that, you know, I appreciate you've done this survey, but for me to change my vote, for example, on this, I mean, I would just have to see that the citizenry are just, they're pretty excited about this. Yeah, there's going to be some people that aren't going to like it, but I, I just feel really strongly that with zone changes that you just have to have really good public support. So that, that's just my two cents on that.
But James, you need to keep in mind, Mark speaking here, that what we're determining is if he even gets the chance to have the public input with another public hearing. So where you're going, I'm sure you're saying, but you went, this is the decision, it's the significant changes and that determines the next step is a public hearing. So you're definitely going to hear from the public again, no question.
No, and I, and I see that, but I just, I guess my point is, I think, you know, all these, I saw five things there on that list. I mean, I would count six if that one elevation is smaller from three stories to what looks like a story and a half or something, but, but I think that, you know, if I were Kyle and I were going into this project, I would just want to be, you know, be on my game for that piece because I, I just think that for me personally, that's just where it got shot down. I mean, I think it's a great project and I don't, I'm not too hung up about any of those other things. You guys have always done great work.
Yeah, I appreciate those comments, James, and, and we, we plan on illustrating that in a, in a better way. I know, I know that it seems a little bit disingenuous to have someone like Nate, you know, be such a strong voice in favor of, but he does own a lot in the Sycamores and, you know, he will be directly affected by this. I understand that, but there is, you know, the last meeting that we had, actual, the city council meeting, hindsight's 2020, you always leave there with the, the great things that you should have said. And I, I remember leaving there and just really wishing that I would have made the comment that there were a lot of people who have attended a lot of meetings, a lot of public hearing meetings, who didn't make comments. And sometimes we just listen to the comments that are being said and we could learn a lot by what was not being said as well. So historically, it's easier, people rally troops in opposition of something as unfortunately for someone like myself, when, when they, they likes a project or want to get behind it. But there were some members who, you know, didn't stand up in opposition to, and I think that says a lot as well. But your note, your comments are right on and we need to make sure that we can illustrate the public's support for the changes that we've made. We've illustrated the public's support in the changes that have happened on the, on the presentation, the plans, elevations, all those types of things. But certainly we need to, we need to garner some support or show that it's garnered and have them come and participate in the public hearing.
Curtis, anything? So as I was keeping track, there was, there was, and you've mentioned this several times about the public support. In my mind, as we try to turn this request into a substantial change and I or not, and that's, that's what's before us right now. I wrote down reduce density. That was one thing. Have you reduced your density from the last time that the council? Or was that from the first?
From the first time.
So since the council just did not, since they didn't approve the second time, they tell, tell us a little more about the change in support. You mentioned the, you mentioned the, the poll that was sent out. Who's that sent? How many in Santa Clara received that poll and what was the, what was the result?
I'll preface that by, by saying that I, I, I've spoke to some staff members about that. That they have mixed feelings on petitions. I like the word poll better than a petition. And because in order for it to have any value, it needs to be, it state the individual's address and, and a signature from them. So I, I, I'll share the numbers with you, but I'm, but I also recognize that they could be manipulated. And so I think we had a little more than 200 people respond. And the percentage was about 93% was in favor of. And I don't think that that carries water. It, it does. It's helpful. But we've, we've been, you know, I myself have been involved in a project that, that's had, you know, 100 or 200 people who are, who are against it. But if you had to survey everybody in Santa Clara as a resident, those numbers wouldn't illustrate the support or those who are against. And so, so that, as James mentioned, would be something that if we have the opportunity to do so, that, that in the public hearing, we would illustrate verbally, that. That the other part of that is, in those previous meetings, City Council specifically, again, some members who did speak, you know, spoke up and shared their thought process of understanding. And we had a lot of communication. I don't want to speak for any of those individuals, but there certainly was a much better understanding of what the project was going to be, the size of the project. And meeting with individuals and having what I felt was their support or change of heart. But again, I'm not here to name drop or speak on their behalf. There were certainly a lot of, a lot of people who had a different understanding. And I think I would say, you know, changed their mind on being in favor or against it.
If there's a different guy up here, he could put you under oath and get you to divulge that. So that leads me to my next question was, you mentioned, and I'm not going to try to get you to divulge what you just talked about, but you mentioned that even the residents in the area, you've worked with them and have, you alluded to the fact that you've changed some minds in that group as well.
Certainly.
Can you elaborate on that?
We held two different site visits, I think, a Zoom meeting, met with people one-on-one of the surrounding, those who are immediately impacted. I certainly appreciate, we appreciate that those who live close to any proposed change feel the impact more than the rest of us. The other side of that is it's still within the city of Santa Clara. And I, for one, I own a home close to, right next to the facility. And I would welcome that. I don't live there, my brother does, but I would welcome this facility. So I understand that. But within that area that we would probably deem would be more affected, yeah, numerous residents that had stood up very in direct opposition saw another perspective and I think understood what our request and desire was. And maybe they were very against and they changed to neutral. So long as it's going to be this way, okay. There are other things that certainly could be much, much worse. Or, you know, we didn't change everybody, you're not going to. But there was, there was a better understanding between us as a developer and the residents and a commitment to work together to form this, you know, an architectural review committee or a committee group that would help in the development of exterior things, interior parks, different things to make it quaint, to keep it quaint. I'm an advocate, I believe that one of the best things about Santa Clara is the reason why it's so charming is because we have seasoned people that live here. And my personal opinion is if you eliminate that, if they continue to leave for one reason or another, that some of the thing that we love dearly and cherish about this area can change. I think this is something that gives us a chance to keep seasoned individuals here and thus keep the Phil.
And my comment there is, my gut feeling is, we'll know a lot more once we have another public hearing.
Yeah. In my mind, we've already talked about the fact that we're looking at defining a substantial, the word substantial, I mean, subjective. I would like to, just personally, I'd like to see it go forward. But is it a substantial change? I think it might be, I think it probably reaches a few checkmarks on it. But the thing that I'm imagining in my mind as we set this in motion again and hear it in the next few weeks instead of November 18th, would basically be the next time you could come if this just doesn't meet the bar of substantial change. So as we, as we set this ball rolling again and we start to, and we fill this chambers up again with residents and they look, they look at us and start pointing their fingers and say, why are we here again? And we've got to be able to say, well, it's a substantial change and it was requested. So that's really... Counselor, do you have anything to add to that?
I think that's correct, there may be questions. But I think what might be helpful is just to stick with the legal standard that's there. And the question is, is there a substantial change? If so, they get another shot. And the citizens may have questions about how we got there procedurally. It's really a pretty discreet legal question, not a legal question, but it's a question for commission. Have they shown a substantial change?
Yeah, and the answer would be basically that the commission met and voted and determined that it was a substantial change, period.
And is it as objective as it feels?
This, the code gives this body the authority to decide. Have they demonstrated a substantial change? Really, it's a pragmatic approach. The ordinance says, look, there's a year wait period. You get denied a zone change, it's a year wait period unless you come with something that's different, merits a rehearing, right? So it's a pretty pragmatic approach. And that's the question for you to decide. Is it different? Is there a substantial change?
I sure felt more comfortable with the substantial change between one and two because of removing that whole parcel and...
You're here.
Go ahead, Corey.
And that's why I read the staff report, had no comment. It's purely the planning commission's direction of staffs.
There's a side of me that says, hey, you know, if we can justify the substantial change, then we're back in the same role of having a public hearing, recommending to the council, yea or nay. And then it's their decision anyway. And so basically, basically this starts the ball rolling nine, 10 months earlier than it would be, nine months earlier than it would be otherwise. But having said that, we got to follow the the code and determine whether that it's a substantial change.
Well, my feeling is, is you know they're in this substantial amount of money. They're not going to come back. They've been in this chambers five or six times, they've heard recommendations, they've heard the city council say no, this is why. We've talked with city council. If they really are bringing it back again to waste their time and their, everything else they're doing, they know what they're getting into. So there's obviously substantial changes that the city council has made to them or has recommended to them. They probably sat down and done those things, whether we can see it visually or not. They know what the council expects, they know what the residents are going to expect. Because if they haven't, they're just wasting their time. And I can imagine that developers, they probably don't have time to waste.
Yeah.
That's my feeling.
I actually had the exact same thought. And so we...
Curtis just said what I was thinking. Having been in your shoes, I understand what you're talking about and I understand that. You know, I've supported this all the way along. And I think you've listened to the things that people have said. I can't tell what their opinion is until I hear from them. And that's, in my opinion, you've checked the boxes of substantial change and, or significant change, that's the actual. And we need to hear from the public if they believe you've done that.
Sure.
So my opinion is, yeah, I take it for what it's worth, but I would say stop right now. And I would make a motion that we give them the significant change we have in public hearing.
I was...
I agree.
Go ahead.
I agree. I was just going to say, I agree with Mark. I mean, I think they've met the, you know, the criteria for what I would consider a significant change, right? If this was one of, if they were my kids and they'd been screwing around and doing some stuff and I wanted to make a significant change, I would consider this a significant change. So I agree with Mark. You guys don't have teenagers, so your kids never acted like that, I'll bet.
Already been...
Been there, done that. Got the T-shirt to prove it.
All right, so that's a great segue. Thank you, James, and thank you, Mark. I will, I think unless somebody has anything else, I'd be open for a motion.
I'd be glad to make a motion. I make a motion that we look at this and accept their significant change and issue another public hearing so the public has an opportunity to complete, so we can have better understanding what the public's position is to that and do so in the form...
I will second that motion. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. Okay. It was a vote of four to one.
So the next public, available public hearing would be March 11th. Submit an application.
Yep.
And get all the paperwork in for the public hearing 10 days in advance. We'll get you on that agenda.
Thank you. Thank you, staff.
Thanks, Kyle.
Thanks, Kyle. So my question is, you voted nay, and I appreciate the fact that you're willing to do. But you didn't make any comments to us before why you would vote nay, I guess.
No, I, just in saying, to me, it wasn't a substantial change.
Your opinion, okay.
From one to two was...
One to two was, two to three was...
Two to three was subjective.
Was a tweak.
It was subjective.
And I'm okay with the subjective just because it puts us back into the...
Public mean, public.
And I totally understand that, but I don't...
No, I appreciate your opinion, I appreciate what you're saying.
All right.
That's what I think is great about this project.
We have, let's go on to item 5A. We are going to have a couple of hours of reviewing and training on the chapters and general plan. Is that right, Corey?
Couple hours?
That is not correct.
I'm giving you 15 minutes.
We've already promised Curtis that he's going to get to his girls' basketball game, so...
So I read through the first two chapters. And I want, and I invite the planning commission members to read through the first chapters.
I've read it.
Really, the only substantial change that I could see was where it mentioned 1.2 general plan organization. So Santa Clara Future has gathered from participants in the general plan, planning process, and illustrates how Santa Clara's planning relates to the Vision Dixie regional planning effort based on our build out, our design of Santa Clara City. When the Knolls pasture came, that was designed around the Dixie, you know, regional planning. I think Santa Clara City has gone away from that. I mean, with the townhomes, the short-term rental, we're not seeing two-story with parks, two-story developments that are clustered together with multiple housing types that are walkable. I would invite planning commission to look at that and see if that's something they still want in their general plan. And go on through and see if through one and two, if there's any of these bullet points on the chapters that need to be updated and feel that are still applicable to what we're seeing develop there in the general plan of the community. So...
So this is with an eye towards what do we need to work on? What do we need to change? What would we like to consider in future, in a future document?
Yeah, our general plan is supposed to be updated every five years. We hardly ever get to that point. I mean, it's more than five years every time we update it. So we should be reviewing it like this all the time, taking a couple of chapters out and reviewing. Is this the direction that the general plan is showing us that we want Santa Clara to go? So I invite you guys to read those two chapters, bring them back in March. We have another discussion if we need to change some things. Bring that to us and we'll get them changed.
Yeah, if it's seven years old, it's time, yeah.
It would also maybe be effective if we had those work meetings we have with the city council. That would be really effective if they had that same assignment and we came together and just had a brainstorming session to where, yeah, to where we could strike stuff or add stuff. And, you know, if we have eight or 10 people in here and plus staff and just brainstorm out loud on some of these issues that we may find or may not find in there, that may be the...
We've experienced it with the walkability and we've experienced it with the density and we've experienced with the two, we've experienced all this.
You have. And that's why we need to go back to the general plan and actually read it and see where, from our work meetings on density, from our work meetings on economic viability versus walkability, that we need to look at the general plan and see if it's leading us down the path that we still want to take. So that's why I invite you to look at those first two chapters. If there, when we bring it back and discuss it, there's several changes, yeah. We would definitely want to get with city council, discuss those changes. Before a change can be made to the general plan, of course, there's public hearings that have to happen. And we invite the public citizens to be involved in those.
Definitely not something happened overnight.
Yeah.
Okay. So we have homework, is what you're telling us?
Yes.
Okay.
It was in the southern, yeah. You don't, up in, really daybreak up in Salt Lake, at a community that had that, that actually implemented some portions of the Vision Dixie. And there were, you know, like the Knolls pasture was totally designed after Vision Dixie. I mean, the Harmon's was supposedly going to have...
Order anchor story building, Harmon's on the bottom, living and commercial on the top.
The first phase of the Knolls pasture residential that Shan Gubler proposed had mother-in-law's cottages, two-story mother-in-law's cottages, parking in the rear, parks, parking paths, parking in the rear, walkability to Harmon's. Had a lot more density than what we're seeing up in the heights now. With the proposal of Black Desert, the townhome project that was just approved for Cold West and Sullivan, it's really not that vision to succeed more. We have, you know, over 500 short-term rentals.
Dramatically changed.
Yeah.
I'll tell you my opinion, based on some things that I've done with my economic development background. Everybody's fallen away from the core of it. The only thing that's existed, continued to exist is the transportation plan portion of it. That's just my observation.
That and maybe the mother-in-law...
Yeah, we're seeing more of that, we're seeing the ancillary dwellings out there. Which I've been reading some studies, I'm going to try and print one out or save one and email to everybody about that.
Good or bad?
Good, positive. That's the only way we're going to be able to handle affordable housing in Utah.
Here, yeah, parts of Santa Clara, yeah.
And that's why we, our our report to the state on affordable housing was that we've changed our ordinance and have those accessory buildings in our ordinance and are moving forward with those.
Okay, thank you. Is that all we had on that, the training?
Yes.
Will the commission make it a point to read?
Absolutely.
Chapters one and two before next meeting?
Absolutely.
All right, let's, yeah, we just lost our...
Legal counsel.
Legal counsel on this one, we need...
Have any of you read this already?
Yeah, we went through it.
Did you?
Yeah, we went through it in that...
No, I was, I don't travel anymore. And that whole meeting was the week I was traveling.
So...
Actually, it's the week my brother passed away on my birthday. Oh, I... Kidney cancer, six weeks from the day he was diagnosed.
That's tough. All right, we've... Are you going to cover this one then, Corey?
Yeah, I have the report that was discussed at the work meeting. Yeah, I have the report that was discussed at the work meeting. Most of you understood what, that Bob had reached out to another community in Florida, one in Indiana, maybe two in Florida, comparing the independent living and how they quantified what the equivalent was to a single family versus assisted living. So, through it all, planning commission and council, where, when they discussed it, they were leaning more toward two assisting living units rather than one and four. And so, I believe they will look at that on the 27th, whether they want to do a pending ordinance statement, to look at it further, change the ordinance, they definitely want to change the ordinance, but they have to have a discussion on is one and two equivalent rather than four to one equivalent, so...
So our task today...
That's a huge difference.
Yeah, it is.
Well, I thought it was, well, it was 3.71 or, or, right? Because the senior independent living was 3.71, and that's what we're talking about?
Senior independent living's 3.71.
Oh, that's right.
Assisted living, or, look at the two, I mean, you need to understand the definition of those three things.
Right. There's, yeah.
I think, based on our other conversation from our previous thing that we talked about today with the nursing, or the care facility thing, to me, the fact that a single-family dwelling represents 9.5 trips a day, assisted living represents 2.6 is huge. And I don't think that it's been illustrated well enough to the people, my own people.
Were you, what did you just say? Restate, restate your point.
I think the fact...
What's huge about it?
Just looking at the fact that the significant difference being 9.5 visit, trips a day for a single family, and then 2.6 trips per bed, which you start adding them up, I think you're dead, I think you're, I think there's a significant difference between those two, you start adding the numbers.
Difference meaning...
That assisted living's lower. Assisted living's lower.
Even lower than 2.6?
Yeah.
Because with that, you've got to figure in the care, the nurses, the, you know, all of that, food staff.
I think, I think it's more, I think assisted living's actually more.
And we...
Because of the...
Oh, more than 2.6?
Yeah.
Oh.
Yeah, because...
I thought you were saying less.
You're missing, yeah, I probably said it wrong because I don't speak real well.
And after our meeting the other day, we, I think the 9.57 trips is light. You look at my family, I probably make 9.7 trips a day myself, not counting two other teenage drivers and my wife. And granted, I'm, I'm...
We're gonna start...
Busy right now.
We could start a rocky road in a hurry, couldn't we?
Let's put a meter on Curtis and charge him for use.
So, yeah, I...
So, so basically, you're looking for us to say, yay, we like it, pass it on to the city council and they can go from there.
Well, it's ultimately gonna come back to you.
Yeah, I know, but it has to go from us to the city council and then come back.
Well, it's not even an action item tonight.
It isn't, we're just having a discussion for those members that didn't make the work meeting, so they understand that this would be coming to them in an ordinance form.
So on page two, the underlined portion is the ordinance form, ordinance, right?
Yes.
And so, the change that was made was, for senior independent living units, assisted living units without their own cooking facilities, the equivalent ratio is two assisted units or two independent units per one. That's, that, and before, when we were talking, that was four?
Yeah, Bob had recommended four because that's what some of these other communities he'd surveyed, but as of right now, it's just one to one, right, Cory?
I believe so, yeah.
And so that's why we're, why we're amending this, is making it one to one?
It depends on whether they have cooking facilities or non-comp...
Yeah, it's gonna be a different heater, right?
So, you take...
It's one to one with cooking facilities, which is, it's...
Makes sense.
It does make sense, but it's not, they're not gonna be driving like you.
Right, right.
But, and two to one, if they, without their own...
Without their own cooking.
Actually, so we went from four to one to two to one and thought that that was probably a good step.
Because if you had four to one, the density per acre would be...
Much more. It could, it could ultimately be 48, which would be pretty tough to hit.
It was an issue of visualizing a building that would...
That would handle a four to one.
Realistic size of use, right?
I, when we're talking with the council, I was thinking that three to one would be great. I thought a four to one was too much, I thought three to one is sort of the right spot. I'm okay with the two to one to start out with. And that's sort of what the discussion was, start with a two to one, and if somebody wants to petition a change, they can do that.
Correct.
Yeah.
So do we need to vote on something like a...
We don't, it's not an action item.
This is just a discussion item.
So, just a learning opportunity, right?
Yeah, and we'll get you from, we're gonna have more discussion with council, whether staff-wise, if they decide to do a pending ordinance statement, they'll direct us to draft an ordinance, and then any, any applicants will have to abide by that outcome.
Unless they get an exception, right? Very rare, right?
So Cory, a question that I had the other day after leaving that meeting is, why is our density restrictions or our requirements or the density code different than St. George? Because they were, they're 12 without a bonus, and we're eight?
I think...
No, they were like 20, weren't they? They were crazy high.
Wasn't it 22?
Yeah.
Yeah, 22. Yeah, but it was based on size of the development, so...
So why are we limiting this? And I know we don't want to bring in skyscrapers, but we couldn't anyway with our building codes and stuff, so why, why do we even need to have a density? I guess that's me just trying to learn. If these other communities around have such big variances from what we have, and what's Ivans, do you know what Ivans is?
I don't.
Okay.
My gut feeling there would be the fact that we want it to be a residential community. We don't want it to feel like a commercial community, right? So, that would probably be one of the reasons it was through their, not knowing what the transfer was, but...
Well, you look at, Georgia City doesn't have the height restriction that we have, our height restriction is 35 feet.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, you've seen the buildings over in St. George, they're four stories, you know, density...
22 is more...
They're going vertical.
Yeah, those, those, those buildings in Dixie, around Dixie State, and then also in Washington around there, where those multi-family, multi-residential...
Those are assisted living.
They are assisted.
Multi-family and assisted living, yeah, they are huge. That what they are is, you know...
And that wouldn't...
2,000 square foot, two-bedroom apartments, basically.
Yeah.
And you go down the hall and...
What they are, they're big flooring.
For four stories.
You've enjoyed that.
I've enjoyed that. All the way to the bake, excuse my fridge.
So I guess that's my question, I just always wondered why, you know, this four to one is such an issue, because we could never really get there.
We couldn't, because...
With our, yeah, it's not like we can go up three or four stories, so, I just, I wonder why we're, especially if they were talking about it the other day, that they're worried the one to one may keep people from coming in to bring in these communities and stuff like that. Why not have a bigger, a four to one if it's not even really possible to do? Does that make sense?
That's a good, that's a good...
You know, if...
So it encourages...
We're trying to encourage people to come in.
Encourages exposure to this, right, encourages that motion and movement, but also knowing that they can't get there anyway, so...
And they still have an opportunity to petition for an except, an exception on it, but it just, anyway, that's me just thinking out loud, but maybe three is the number, because three is a bigger number, but it's still pretty hard to attain that number if they get a density bonus, that's still 36 units per acre, that's gonna be really tough to hit.
Well, it's really gonna depend on where the location is, what they're proposing.
They've got to do a lot of other, check a lot of...
Check a lot of boxes off to even propose any higher density.
I guess the other argument was, why have it four to one if you know they can't do it?
Can't hit it anyway, other than just to get people to come in and propose stuff or at least entertain it, but if it's...
Yeah, I don't, I don't think that the new ordinance, when it comes out, will, will suggest four to one.
And I think that's too big, I'm just talking out loud on the...
Well, that's, that's good. This is great discussion. All right, did we have any other thing, any else we wanted to say on that? Because I'm ready to go on to the next item.
I know what that is, let's do it.
All right, minutes from last time. Anybody have a motion to accept those?
I make a motion to accept the minutes from January 14th, 2021.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to accept the minutes, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? James said aye, it's unanimous. All right, we are, we are to adjournment. We can just adjourn, or we can have somebody move to adjourn, or just turn around and walk out?
So be it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good meeting.
Thanks, James.
Thanks.
Where is he?
He's right there.
Right here, right here.
Did he really? Yeah.
Thanks, Lee.
Actually, it was two...